Fledges of allegiance by Commissioner Wilson. Then we'll have roll call. Let's stand, please.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we ask your blessing on our city and on our state. As we get ready for Irma this weekend, keep people safe, Lord. Keep people prepared and in out of harms way. We ask a blessing on all of our first responders who are going to be working through this weekend. Keep them safe as they keep the rest of us safe. We ask for a blessing on all of us here at the commission meeting. Give us the wisdom to make the good decisions we need for tonight to bring our city forward. We ask a special blessing on all our first responders wherever they are in the world. Keep them safe and bring them home to us. We ask all of us in your name, amen.
The United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Grogan?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Fersher?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
All right. Start off, this is a public hearing on the tentative budget and proposed millage rate for the city of Ocoee. Notice of this hearing was contained in the notice of proposed property taxes mailed by the property appraiser. The city commission has previously set a proposed millage rate of 6.5 mils, which represents a 19.6 percent increase in millage over the rollback grade of 5.357 mils. All right, now we'll have the city attorney give a brief.
By the preliminary millage rate set by the city commission and contained in the trim notices is 6.5 mils. The maximum millage rate which can be levied by the city by regular majority vote for the 2017-2018 fiscal year is 7.3615 mils. Such maximum millage rate having been determined pursuant to section 200.185 subsection 3A Florida statutes. The establishment of a millage rate between 7.3616 mils and 8.0977 mils requires a two-thirds vote, a supermajority, of the membership of the city commission or four votes. The establishment of a millage rate between 8.0978 mils and 10 mils requires a unanimous vote of the city commission. Additionally, any millage rate adopted above the preliminary millage rate of 6.5 would require notice by first-class mail to each taxpayer. The tentative millage rate adopted at this hearing will become the maximum millage rate which may be adopted by the city commission at the public hearing on the final millage rate. A unanimous vote or a two-thirds vote may be required to adopt a tentative millage rate as the final millage rate. At the public hearing, the city commission may adopt a millage rate which is less than the tentative millage rate.
All right, now we're gonna have the briefing about the finance director.
After the budget workshop, staff performed a comprehensive review, correct any unintended omissions, and finalized estimated program costs. Changes made to the budget after the workshop include adjusted estimates for revenues and expenses. We added grant revenue and expenditures for the FEMA safer grant that was approved by the commission tonight. Added revenues and expenses for the return, partial return of the red light program on State Road 50. We added reserve for the Northwest Fire Station. And we made an adjustment to fire protection fees of $60,000 and a minor adjustment to capital equipment for police. These items are summarized from page eight of the handout EBC. Proposed operating budgets for the city of Ocoee for fiscal year 17 total $69,47163. That should be 2018, that's all right. General fund budget is $47,527,725 and is balanced at 5.6202 mils. The difference between 6.5 mils and the 5.6202 mils is $1,916,664, which is not currently in the budget. Adverum taxes are being assessed to provide funding for operational expenses, capital purchases, debt service payments, and salaries necessary to provide municipal services. Items identified by the staff or commission that are not included in the proposed budget are itemized on the unfunded list for discussion. Commission approved a tentative millage rate of 6.5 mils for the 2018 fiscal year budget. This rate is higher than the rollback grade of 5.4357 mils and represents an increase of 19.6 percent over the rollback grade.
You done?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now we'd like to call upon the public for comments. Each speaker must fill out a speaker form and present it to the recorded secretary prior to speaker. Also, we'll set the timer for five minutes if anybody in the public wants to speak anything on the budget process. You got the form filled out already?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have up to five minutes.
Yes, sir.
So, five minutes, I gotta be kind of, kinda quick. I wanna say first off, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. I know most of you guys are volunteers, for the most part, and I appreciate that. My name is Chris Adams. I live at 606 Ridgefield Avenue, Ocoee, Florida. I'm a resident and homeowner for 15 years here in Ocoee. There's a couple things I wanna touch base on about the budget. One, I'd like to ask in regards to an amendment that was passed last year. It was put forth by Commissioner Grogan in regards to an audit for individual departments. I know we do a financial audit every year, but we haven't audited our departments for many years, and I think we allocated $60,000 to have that particular audit done. So, that would be my first question, where we are on that, if we started that, and what's going on? Because that was last year, I was here last year for the budget as well. Second off, I'd like to talk about the Ocoee Founder's Day. One thing I noticed last year in the budget was that the Ocoee Founder's Day had an expense line on it, but it did not have an income line on it. I think something of that amount of revenue should be separate from any kind of Parks and Rec or any other department's budget. It should be its own entity, stating that, you know, hey, this is what we spend and this is what we could give in. I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, or we should or shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that with that amount of money, it would be nice to see it as a citizen, to be separate. That way we can see where our scholarships and, or our sponsorships and stuff come in. So, that would be the second item I'd like to touch base on, on the budget that I noticed from last year. One thing I'd like to make notice is that we did have a slight millage increase last year. We also had a sales tax increase last year within the city means. Something I've talked about with Rosemary on multiple occasions is our adverum fees. I think as a resident, especially if you own a home less than $200,000, it's starting to get kind of extreme. We have firefighting fees, which I had originally spoken to Mayor Vandergriff, and I had also spoken to Pete McNeil, who was the fire chief at that point in time, when that was originally put in place. That was put in place during the recession. We had budget shortfalls, we had home sales where taxes were getting less revenue, so we put that fee in place. I had made notice that I was concerned that that may lead to other fees, which it did, of course. We now have three fees that are amended to our taxes in form of adverums, and they almost double the tax rate that you would get necessarily from the county, which includes some money that already goes to the city, you know, and whatever. You guys understand how that works. I only have two minutes and 30 seconds left, so I gotta keep moving quickly. So, those are a growing concern. When I was addressed, when I address this same, in the same room, some of the same individuals, when these places, when these adverums came into place during the recession, I was concerned that they would stay around long-term. We'd now seen house pricings go up, so income taxes has come in that are, I mean, sales taxes have come in, or home values have come in that have raised that, but our adverums stayed the same. I think at some point in time, the residents of the city have to get a break. I love what you guys are doing, it's great, you know, but I think our adverum should cover the necessities that they speak for and not additional things. I think as a resident that lives in a modest home here, it's hard to give Ocoee $700 on top of my regular tax bill. And then if we keep increasing that and using that as a leverage, I think it's tough. I know we've added adverums as well for things such as properties that may have a cost to them, that adds to the cost of the sale of the home. So, we're utilizing that in ways that I, in my opinion, I understand and could be utilized, but I don't want them utilized in excess. So, that would be something that I would be concerned about. Other than that, I'd like, does my one minute include your responses or no?
When you get through, then I'll respond.
Okay, beautiful. Excellent. Another thing I'd like to see addressed is, you know something, I'm a resident and I, and my son goes up to Jim Beach, he pays a dollar to pay, so I'm talking about these adverums, I'm talking about these taxes, and we know Orange County may actually, this is on the budget this year for them, do something as far as our homestead exemptions. So, how much are you gonna put on the bearer of the consumer when the market is good now? That's just my opinion. I mean, you can keep pounding the dog to death if you'd like, which is what we did when it was bad, and I understood it at that point in time, but at this point in time, I don't exactly understand the same need, or the same need it was, it was, the same need as it was stressed to us at that point in time, which was in a necessity, now it's still there and no longer a necessity, because it was based upon home values then. So, those things remained, home values are back up, and we still have all these non-adverum assessments that are added and other things, so. It just seems like we're paying a lot as a consumer here in Ocoee, and it's a concern of mine. Thank you.
All right. I'll start, then somebody else can say. On the first audit of all departments, I'll let John address that in a minute. Ocoee Founder's Day, we do make a budget up. The budgets, funding right now, we're in the process of doing, we collect money from sponsorships, then we collect money from selling different things or having different articles. We can have, we have a total budget at the end of the year that the finance department can, we can give you a cost thing of that, but we do do a budget. We put the Founder's Day thing on for the citizens, 'cause it's free, the majority of it, but we do, we end up maybe out of $250,000, we end up losing $5,000, $10,000. That's a minor, minor cost for what goes on with all the different activities that citizens get for free. Winter garden puts them on all the time, they don't cover the cost. And on the other issue, on the millage, we did go down last year. If you checked your millage rate, our millage rate went down from five, whatever it was, to down, what was this year's millage rate, Bob?
5.8291.
All right, before that was 5.9 something.
It was actually, it was actually 5.68. It was proposed at 6.5.
No, no, wait a minute, let me finish, you talk.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
The millage rate went down. We always propose higher.
May I ask what the millage rate was?
Let me finish.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me finish. The millage rate went down.
Okay.
It was 5.96, I think, last year. It went down to 5.8.
Okay.
This year, we've got it going down to 5.62. Now, we have no way to judge what the county raises your appraisals on anything. I don't know what, you pay 700, I pay 2,400 a year. But the modest, and then on the last one, on the assessments you're talking about.
That may be easier for you than I, I don't know.
Only assessments we put on you, we have a $65 fire fee. That's the only assessments we put.
We actually have stormwater and waste, yeah?
The stormwater fee was obligated to us by the federal government to start. We have no choice.
Yeah, but we're using them in non-adverum assessments, which are amended to our taxes that come from the county, so they are still a fee. It may not be a tax, but it's a fee.
Yeah, they are a fee, the non-adverum assessments. Before they were put on your tax bill, you received them in a utility bill each month. So, what we did, and in order to be more fair to all the residents, yourself included, was, you know, we had people moving out and houses being vacant, not paying taxes and not paying, you know, you have a garbage truck drive by a house, and we're still providing the route in front of the house and everything, and just because someone wasn't living there, they weren't paying their garbage bill. So, what we did, we put it on as a non-adverum assessment to make everyone pay their fair share of the service, but those were charges that used to be on your utility bill every month.
Yeah, I understand they're on, yeah. I understand they're on utility bill.
And it was just to make it more fair for everyone, so the people who, you know, abandoned their houses, the people whose houses sat vacant for a year while they were selling them, everybody else in the city was paying for those people to have availability of water and sewer and stormwater and garbage, and that wasn't fair, which is why we put it on the tax bill. I don't think we've raised garbage, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, seven or eight years, we've had the same price for garbage. It used to be on your tax bill. I mean, I'm sorry, it used to be on your utility bill. We stopped that and we put it on the tax bill in order to keep that rate the same.
I understand, I understand how the adverums work. What they do is they work in conjunction with, like, if somebody can't pay, then you can force them some, you know, it goes to their tax bill. I understand the principle of it. And if people weren't paying before and it created a budget shortfall, to assess it to the adverums is only spreading the debt to other people who are actually paying, which is, you know, that's just my, you know, hey.
There's a period, okay, there's a period of time, too, that you can take those away off of your tax bill and have them billed to you monthly, isn't that when we have a, every year, we have a, we have a timeframe that you can?
I'm not worried about paying it in a lump sum or a monthly sum, I'm worried about the way that it's particularly set up. I, in my, just, this is, hey, listen, and I don't want, this is, these are just recommendations. I have trust in the people that are sitting up here. That's why I voted for Rosemary, that's why I vote for individuals to take care of these things. These are just my concerns. So, in retrospect, I do educate myself and understand them, but in my opinion, which of course all of us can have one, by utilizing a non-adverum tax assessment and assessing it on top of taxes, you are basically forcing the hand on the individuals who are doing what they're supposed to do. Okay? And the individuals that don't still get away with that.
Yeah, I agree with that assessment, I think it makes it more fair, and I can tell you, if we didn't do that and we have, you know, especially at the peak of the housing crisis, we had at some point, you know, 15, 10, 15 percent vacancies, none of those people were paying their trash and their stormwater, so I know for a fact that if we didn't put it on as a non-adverum assessment, you'd probably be paying significantly more in garbage right now, and that's why we did that.
That may be something you would do as an analysis after the fact, I can't speak for that. All I can speak for is what was told to me in the same room at the time of the recession when we had home values down, why these adverums were being used. And it was to, it was to cover shortfalls in the budget because the home revenue taxes were down.
Well, they were.
Now that, I, I'm not questioning, I mean, clearly, I live here, I know what they were and they weren't, but they're now back up, but we're still utilizing them and actually adding to them.
Well, we're still utilizing them at the same rate that they've been for many, many years right now. I mean, costs have gone up and each of the stormwater.
Like I said, I'm not, it's not about a debate, I'm just showing you, I'm just telling you a concern, you guys make the decisions that you would like to make, it's just a concern of mine.
I'm just, honestly, I'm just trying to understand, the good government that we use to do that has kept costs down, and I don't understand the negative aspect of it.
I would say the percentages of municipalities that have this excessive amount of adverums within the state of Florida are less than you would believe. Some of them are still following the same protocol from before, and I would, I would argue that that particular protocol from before is now beneficial to the homeowners when this particular protocol that was put in place during a recession for a particular reason is now non-beneficial. That's just, yeah, I mean, you can't do that until you do a cost analysis, right? What do you do? I can say that whatever the non-adverums, whatever they're for, firefighters, I'll give you a million dollars a year. Police, you need that money? I don't have, this is not, this is not about that, but whatever the fees are for, they should go specifically in, in, I can't remember this gentleman's name, what's his name?
Bob Briggs.
Bob. Bob outlined some of what the adverums on top of just trash or just whatever would go towards. There's other things that it covers as well. So, the adverum taxes aren't covering just specifically garbage or just specifically firefighting, it's also adding other things as well. If I'm, am I correct in saying that?
No, 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 no.
And Chris, I know you're not being argumentative, and I understand, we've had different conversations, okay? Can I, let me just, if it's okay, but I think I'm getting a little lost on this, because I know when, in my original water bills, I had stormwater and I had garbage, and then we converted over to the non-adverum. Quite frankly, if I'm not, if I'm correct, that it was a little bit cheaper for us as residents to put it in that, because we got the money in the lump sum from, or we'd get it from the county. I think that it was working out better for our residents in those cases, and the other thing I wanted, I say, those were two factors that I looked at, that I think it was coming out better, in fact, for me as a resident, to pay it in one lump sum. And the one thing I don't want you to get lost on, and I'm hoping that's not happening, is that you're looking at the total bill, because all I wanna do, and all that we can do here is sit and look at, and I wasn't playing with my phone, I was bringing up my tax bill, okay? That, when you say that we went up in taxes, in 2015, the millage rate was 5.9104, then the next year it went to 5.8291, and then this year, the proposed is 5.6?
202.
202, okay? And the reason you may see a hike in your bill is because your house value went up, which we have nothing to do with. I mean, I think, well, I think it does affect us, because of the city, the houses are going up in value, but I think the only, only one that I think that we've had questions with the non-adverum is folks have questioned the fire fee, but the other two fees, I was paying monthly in my water bill. Now I'm just paying it as a, as a whole. And I know you're not being argumentative, and we appreciate you being here, because as you can tell, you are probably among the few citizens that are here, and we appreciate your opinions.
Yeah, the firefighting fee went in place because voters in Orange County voted against a proposal to fund Orange County, so they actually took a loss, which is where we had to make up the difference. I spoke with Pete McNeil, Pete McNeil, when he was the fire chief, in detail with Mayor Vandergriff. So, this isn't something I'm new at, and I appreciate the conversation. I'm definitely not argumentative, like I said, I'm appreciative of you guys. These are just concerns of mine. In my opinion, and the way I, the way I look at things, and if a lot of consumers looked at their bill, fees, fees are a way to circumvent taxes, because you can only raise taxes so much, so. I appreciate your time.
Can I add something at this point? Do you mind if I add something? I just wanna say that if everyone, maybe who's listening, if they would look at what they're paying the county, and then look at what they're paying the city, that I think they would see that what services they're getting from us are so much greater than they're getting from the county.
Look at just the school.
We won't even go, okay.
Orange County school and your state schools probably double what your taxes here. I think it's 16 mils.
Add together?
Add together, 16 mils for a school.
I don't think, we're trying to be argumentative with you.
No, we're trying to explain.
We're trying to answer what you're saying.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
But in reality, we have lowered the millage rate, and that's one of the things I said I wanna do, and we've all gone along with it. We lowered it last year in the first year.
We raised sales tax, too, yeah.
And we went down again this year.
Well, we don't raise sales tax. That's, that's not, the ci, city, we're not able to raise, all's we, taxes, the only taxes we do is the adverum. And do you, do you realize how many properties in the city do not pay adverum to the city? You realize that is, Bob, would you have the percentage of that?
I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head.
20, 20 percent? 20 percent of the homeowners pays? You understand, now, let me try to explain something to you, which is, I think, being lost there. The fire fee, okay? Now, you gotta figure, 20 percent of the properties here in the city do not pay, they pay zero, okay, in adverum to here. So, what makes up for that? It's gonna be the people that pay the adverum. So, to alleviate that by having that 20 percent have a fire fee, which everybody pays equally on the size of their property, that's, that's helping to reduce the adverum on the houses.
I get you, Mr. Grogan, but 20 percent don't pay.
You're absolutely, you wanna look it up?
Yeah, because of the homeowner exempt, because of the.
That's exactly right.
Homeowner exemption.
I, I got a grasp of it, so, and then I don't wanna take up too much time, and I appreciate everyone's, you know, time very much. But there was one question, we did, you did, Mr. Grogan, put forth an audit for departments. I was wondering where we were.
That's, I asked him to answer that, so.
Oh, okay, thank you, sir.
The manager and I have spoken numerous times on this, and the cost of a single office audit far exceeds the $60,000. So, we're trying to come across agreement pricing and to come back to and figure out, you know, how much it is gonna be, and be specific about it, and then bring it back to the commission to see whether.
That sounds like a good time since we're doing budget, yeah? When was the last time one of those was done in Ocoee?
To my knowledge, I don't think there was one, that's why I brought it up.
That's why I was concerned about it. I appreciate your time, guys, thank you.
So, you got more than five minutes. You got more than five minutes. All right, all right, no more, anybody else in the audience wanna say anything? All right, and we'll close it and bring it up. Any other city commission for comments?
We don't vote on this till the next meeting, correct?
We have to vote tonight. Usually what we've done in the past is put in, so that we don't lower it for this one, but what we've done in the past is put in contingency, the difference from that 5.6202 to the, to the 6.5, and then we take it out and vote to alleviate it at the next meeting. But that way, in case something comes up and we need to add something in, you have, because once you, once you vote to lower it, you can't go higher again, so, that's what we've done in the past.
And that's why the piper's put it in the piper, that we have a higher millage rate. It's like somebody was talking in the back a while ago about it coming out in Sentinel, that the millage rate was high. We were one of the cities with a higher millage rate. Because of what we have to do by law, we have to put it in the hour until we get to the last meeting, where we lower it.
You don't have to, Mayor, but you're doing it just to save, to possibly save us from having to go through, right, correct.
All right, anybody else?
I do have one, one other question there. Mr. Attorney, probably, right now, we're actually at the 5.75. We have to vote to put in the difference between the 5.75 and the 6.02, or is that already in there?
It says.
Yeah, you're gonna, at least if you follow what you've done in the past, you're gonna add everything in to come up with the tentative millage rate. Vote on that and approve that.
You'd be adding in credits and expenditures, basically.
Right, but what I mean is the, right now, we're balanced at 5.75. In order to get it down to 5.6202, we gotta put in these credits and debits.
That's correct, that's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Just like it says right here. All right. Commissioner Fersher, do you have any comments? No, I don't. Commissioner Wilson, any more?
No.
Commissioner Grogan?
No.
All right, if there are any amendments to the proposed tentative budget. Hold on a minute. I wanna bring up one, one item, and I want, Rob, we can bring it back to the next thing about the payment on Malcolm. And I would take it up, Rob said, about 5, 5.63 something.
Yeah, that'll bring it up slightly, and if you'd like, we can leave it on the unfunded list for now, we'll find, we can, we can deal with that in the next, in the next public hearing, yeah.
That's handling Malcolm with some of the drainage problems.
Could you repeat what you said? I'm sorry, Rusty, I couldn't have.
We were looking at, Steve was pulling up Malcolm Street.
Oh, okay, we talked about it last.
Yeah, we talked about it, so.
Okay, all right.
The price is, what it costs, it raises it up just a hair, so Rob's gonna look at it between now and the next tentative budget meeting, so we can file a budget here.
Is that Malcolm Road?
Malcolm, yeah. It's Malcolm Street, it runs off Flueella.
Right, but is it, is it there's two Malcoms, just so we're clear?
Malcolm, one Malcolm, it runs cross, runs across Russell.
Okay, does it change from Malcolm Road to Malcolm?
It's Malcolm, I don't know, Road Street.
No, Malcolm, okay, I just wanna make sure, let's be clear.
There's only one Malcolm in Ocoee.
It's in my district, I realize that, but I just wanted to check.
There's only one Malcolm.
Okay.
All right, so, all right, I call upon the city commission for a motion, motions by commissioners for amendments to the proposed tentative budget.
Do you want individual motions for each of the items, or would you take one motion to go from, change the budget from 5.75 to 5.6202 based on the proposed millage rate changes on the?
Yeah, I think we've done it, either individually or altogether.
All together works.
I'll make the motion that we go from 5.75 to 5.6202 based upon the recommendations of the proposed budget, the millage rate changes on the unfunded list.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Keller to go to, from 5.75 to 5.6202. Do I hear a second?
A second, Ben.
Seconded by Commissioner.
I have a question.
Let me get through the...
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner first. I'll open it up for comments. Okay.
Do you want to go? Okay, but Joel, is that contradicting what you just said?
No, because then what we want to do is put in a motion before the end of the night that says we would like to put in the, the contingency, whatever the difference between 5.6202 and 6.5 is. So we'll make a second, so there'll be a second motion.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Get out on that. All right, now, whose turn is it now?
I think it's yours to decide whether we vote...
Back down to here? Well, did you get through, we got a second, who's seconded?
Commissioner first.
All right, motions on the table. Do I hear any more discussion? If not, let's vote.
Hold on. We don't need to recalculate anything we have.
No, we're still at 5.6202.
We said we could wrap it all in one.
They did an amendment to take 282,800 out of the budget.
That's in the, yeah.
Based on that detailed list of items on the unfunded list.
Okay.
So then, we already know what the millage rate is.
Okay.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously.
So my, my next question to staff. What is the difference between 5.6202 and 6.5 that I have to put in contingency?
You don't have to go all the way to 6.5. And I think what you did last year was you originally started at 6.5, and I thought to leave yourself some leeway, you used six as your upper limit after the first hearing last year. But it can be any number that you don't think you're going to exceed.
Because I know we got to go up a little probably at the next one from Malcolm.
We're not going up 6.5.
No, that, that's true.
If what you're telling me is true, 5.7 would do it.
Well, what, okay, what's the amount?
The amount to take it to 6.5 is 1,916,664.
And what's the cost of Malcolm?
We don't know.
So all we need to do is put an amount of 5.7.
Seventy-five thousand, Commissioner.
Do we, do we go to 5.7?
Quite a difference from 1 million.
Yeah, yeah. All right, if that'll cover it, what's the...
Do you need to do that to the leeway for a lot more? Do you need to do that to the leeway?
That, well, we don't have to do it today, but if we do that, we're, that's the highest we're going. We won't go any higher than that at the next meeting.
But do we do six? Do we do six? You said six the last...
I think you originally did, for tentative, you did 6.5, and then we all realized you didn't really need to keep it at 6.5 after the first meeting. So I think we brought it down to six, just to give some, some wiggle room.
I like the six only be, I'm sorry, are we going to wait for a motion?
Yeah, I need to know what a number is before we can make it a six.
I like the six only because between now and the time we come back, if we have that wiggle room in case there is something that we did not anticipate.
Yeah, considering we got a hurricane coming, too.
You put a round number in, if you put 850,000 in, it puts you at 6.0104.
I don't want to do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to put the millage up. I don't plan on going, I don't plan on going above 5.7.
I, I don't want to, I just, I'm just saying, just because if we, anything comes up, we've got a situation where then you got to do a re-mailing, and I...
Plus, we're going to knock it down at the next time. So I mean, it isn't like, it isn't like this is a permanent thing. This is more just for a placeholder than anything else.
I think the mayor's suggestion, the validity of that is typically after the first hearing that we have, all the newspapers are going to start reporting what your rate is. And that's the bad part about staying at six or 6.5.
What does 5.7 get us? What, what number do I, what do we need?
We don't have that. I mean, last year, we had, you know, the commission adopted six and a half, and we did our, our reporting for that. It left us a sufficient amount of leeway as we moved to the public hearing.
Well, that's what I mean, but if we, if we use a 5.7 as a, as a, how much?
You have 160,000 wiggle room.
160,000. We got, that covers what we need.
We always end up with a surplus.
You got the contingency money, too.
All right, so make a...
No, there's not, no, there is no contingency. There is nothing in contingency, right? So the problem is that if we have nothing in contingency, and then we're looking at 75, let's say 75 to 80,000, if not more, to fix that, we're looking at about 125,000.
It's, it's 5.7, Rob said it's 160, so it covers, that is about, they're going to go back and look through the budget anyway for some of that.
Twice as much as what we need, yeah.
Right, Steve? Yep, take it.
All right, so...
Right, Rob? All right, 5.7?
So make it for 160,000 in contingency then?
I like a little more.
Yeah, I have a concern here.
I think, Bob, what he's saying is if we used a tentative rate this evening of 5.7, the difference between 5.6202 and 5.7, we put in contingency. We make a, we add that to contingency.
Okay, and the 1.916 goes away, and your contingency becomes, what, 160,000?
Right, instead of the 1.9, we're going to put 160,000 in contingency roughly to make it...
That's, that's all the wiggle room will have.
That is all the wiggle, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, so if we come back, yeah.
We've wiggled enough.
Yeah, they're telling me they're not going to go any higher than that. I would, I would, you know, like I said, I would have done 6.5 just to keep it consistent.
Well, I know, but we're not changing it. If we're, if we're sitting here telling them that we're going to go to 5.7 to max, if any, I mean, we're not wiggling then. So what's the difference?
How about 5.8?
Well, I will, I will bring up, I guess, I guess, one point only to Bob's point here. There's two things we've left off, which are on the unfunded list. And one is the fire staffing of six paramedics for six months and the fire rescue transport revenues, which is another 137,000 to add in there, which would get us to 5.683.
Here's, here's another point. I'm going to ask each one of you a question. How many wouldn't talk to Rob the last two weeks to three weeks about that?
About the fire res?
We discussed that. We, we're going to do that, just like we talked about with the 500,000. They took the 200 something out for the, for the plan, and then we'll do the same thing next year and go towards doing it. So we've already, and if you're going to, I'm just saying, if you've got those questions, go to Rob before now. So we can't add that in now, Joel.
Well, I, I just noticed that's on the unfunded that we haven't talked about, so I just want to make sure.
That's why I said, how many talk to Rob?
Yeah, well, I've talked to him earlier on, but that's, yeah, but...
All right, here's what we do. We do 5.75 where it's at now. Would that work?
Gives you a contingency of 282,200.
And then out of that's going to be 75 or 80. And then out of that would be 75 or 80 for Malcolm.
Right.
Right?
Maybe, might not.
Well, let's just say 8,000 for Malcolm. Let's, let's add a 10% on there. So we had 80% for Malcolm, that leaves us with about a, you're not comfortable, are you, Bob?
No, I'm not. Quite frankly, I'm really uncomfortable with it. I can't recommend strongly enough that I think you should maintain the six and a half as a tentative rate. Everybody knows what we do. We're going to come down as low as we can go.
What is the difference?
I don't think it should concern us.
I mean, it just makes it show it in the paper. What's the difference? If that's what we know we're doing. I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Well, we did the same thing last year. We adopted 6.5 as a tentative rate.
If we're sitting here telling you, and we all know we're not going to do that, why does it matter?
Well, because we have our... I mean, Irma's looming out there, and it's kind of disconcerting to me, but...
If we went down...
We just cut everybody's sours in half.
And I understand, I understand you're, you're not comfortable at this point. I'm probably not as comfortable because I feel as though we've still got another meeting. I feel as though we've still got another meeting to go that I'd hate to see something blow up in our face within two weeks or a week. What is our next meeting? Is it two weeks?
It's 10 days away.
10 days away.
We don't know when it is.
And, you know, I realize, we're going to get, you know, no matter what we do, you're going to get, you're going to be in the paper. I hate to say it, I'm, I don't, I work for the residents, not for the Orlando Sentinel, but they don't help us. But I'm just concerned, I like the idea of even going down to the six that Joel initially talked about, or I'd even go 5.8, but I just am on the side of caution here, on the side of caution that if we have anything come up in the next 10 days, I'm, it just makes me nervous.
Seven or 30 years, we'd have nothing come up.
Well...
That's all right, I mean, I don't care. We'll vote for it. But Rob, do you think that's what we need?
I'm, I'm comfortable at six. I'm comfortable at 5.8 or 6.
Pick a number, guys.
You know, yeah, we have, we have a hard can out there, keeping in mind that, yes, it might take us, what, two, two hearings to do a budget amendment. But you have millions of dollars in the bank with just two public hearings, you can adjust the budget anytime. So, you know, I, I understand Bob's concern if we have less in reserves, but you've worked hard to build up the reserves for the last several years. So it's not like you don't have access to that money. It's like you have access to that money within a month, basically. It takes a month and two public hearings to be able to, to use that money.
How about 5.8? Well, I feel like we're bargaining here.
We made the motion.
I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion for 5.8 mils.
You got to do it, I think, you have to read it?
But I think we have to put a number to that, so, yeah. Give a, give them a number.
Do you have to, does he have to read that?
Okay, if we go to 400,000 as a contingency, it takes us to 5.8038 mils.
Okay, and how much was that?
400,000.
400,000? So John, your motion is for 400,000 in contingency?
Yes, 5.803?
8038.
8038.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Grogan to 5.8038, seconded by Commissioner Keller. No more discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, let me, let me just, let me just read the title to that ordinance that we just voted on.
This is where you just...
Yeah. Bob, what's the percentage over the rollback rate?
Of what, 5.82?
5.8038.
Eighteen, nineteen percent?
No, it's much lower than that.
6.7719 percent over the rollback rate. How much? 6.77 percent over the rollback rate. This is an ordinance of the City of Ocoee, Florida, establishing a tentative millage rate of 5.8038 mils for adverum taxes for the City of Ocoee for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, providing for millage adjustment, providing for collection of taxes, providing for 6.77 percent in millage rate over the rollback rate, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right, I now need a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson, do I hear a second?